Good evening and welcome. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board on December 9th, 2021. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2021 Resolution of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings Planning Board of Princeton for February 2021 through January 2022. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 22nd, 2021. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 25th, 2021 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, PrincetonNJ.gov/calendar. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Please note, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment should virtually raise your hand using the Raise Hand button at the center of the bottom of the participant screen, or if you're participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity or hate speech, or that relates to matters not before the board, will be muted. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capasoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. First up, we have announcements. Are there announcements by members of the board or staff?
The nominating committee should look out for an email coming very soon.
Thank you, Julie, Chair of the Nominating Committee.
That was actually more of a warning than an announcement.
Yeah.
Incoming.
I had a brief announcement, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Please, go ahead.
Well, actually, it's not an announcement either. It's not so much a warning as a thank you, because I know, I think most everybody knows that I'm stepping down from the Planning Board at the end of the year, and I just wanted to, you know, thank everybody for being such great colleagues and doing such great work. I mean, this has been, this has been a great experience for me. I certainly, you know, we'll miss, we'll miss a lot of aspects of it, and I miss seeing you all on a regular basis on Zoom, or hopefully one day back in, back in the, on the dais in the Council Chamber. I mean, particularly, also want to thank Wanda, who's, you know, who's not here tonight, and Louise, for their exceptional leadership of this board, you know, during the time I've been here. You know, I think it's not a, you know, it's not, it's not an easy job to corral all these things and keep track of everything that's going on, and I think that, you know, both of, both of you all have done a great job, and, you know, really, really appreciate that. And I also wanted to thank, you know, Michael and Derek and Jim and the many staff members who, from the, from the town that have also just, you know, done amazing work, and, you know, this, this board could not function, you know, the way it does, you know, without, without the, the exceptional, like, expertise that, that you all bring every time. And so I just wanted to thank you all and to say, you know, I'm not going anywhere in terms of, you know, living in Princeton and being committed to, to, you know, progress and, and, you know, thoughtful development in this town, and so I hope that, I hope to continue to stay plugged in on some of these issues. And also, you know, certainly, this experience has helped me sort of, you know, learn a lot about the way that the town does its business, you know, which is helpful in thinking about some of the land use planning work that I'm doing at the state level as well. So, you know, I may call on some of your expertise, you know, for that in the future as well, and, you know, I just look forward to, to continuing to stay involved and seeing everybody around. So, so thanks very much. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Wow, thank you. That was so gracious, and we look forward to continuing to draw you in whenever and however we can, first probably with the master plan work, you know, starting next year. So, you have been such an excellent colleague, and you'll be dearly missed.
I'm sure you're gonna miss, let's sing around till 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah, Jeffrey, if you can't sleep, you know, 11 o'clock on a Thursday, just tune in. We're at our finest that late. It's been a pleasure, Jeffrey, and we would have had a cake for you, but that's not possible right now, but it's been a real pleasure serving with you. Continued success, continued success at the state level.
Thanks.
Jeffrey, I just wanted, on behalf of the staff, to thank you so much, and in particular, your leadership on ZARC was, was so key to what we were trying to accomplish in projects like the projecting signs, and we couldn't have done it without you, so thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thanks very much, Michael.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other announcements from staff or board members before we move on to minutes? Okay, I understand, Jeffrey, you may need to drop off before the absolute very end of the meeting. So we'll take this opportunity. When the time comes, you can just duck out and not worry about announcing your exit. We'll notice when that happens. Thank you again. Minutes. I don't have a printer with me here in the mountains, so I'm pulling up the minutes from January 23rd, 2020, regular meeting. I know there were comments incorporated and edits from Mr. Mueller. Does anybody else have?
Some of those comments were not incorporated, and I will go into detail when, when it's time.
Okay. Are there other suggestions or edits before Carrie goes for those? Okay, go ahead, Carrie.
Okay. Page two, Mr. Mueller was asking for a change regarding the representation, what was said, and he and I agreed that we can change the wording such as, okay, instead of crossing out Mr. Roselli stated in the third row, I'm going to include, Mr. Roselli stated that during Mr. Brown's previous testimony, Mr. Brown was asked if the applicant submitted an application, because that is accurate.
Okay.
And Jerry agreed that that would be fine. Everything else that he had indicated are fully acceptable.
Good.
Those members in attendance, who are, those members in attendance tonight, Mr. Oakman, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Ms. Sacks, Mr. Texarney, and yourself, Ms. Wilson.
Are the, those of us who are eligible to move and second and vote?
I will move with the change as read by Carrie.
And I will second.
Thanks. Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or standing?
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a discussion of an ordinance referral. This is ordinance number 2021-34, an ordinance amending certain sections of the municipality of Princeton. Ordinance 2020-15 Affordable Housing Ordinance to address the requirements of the Fair Housing Act and the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls, UHAC, regarding compliance with the municipality's affordable housing obligations. The record should show that Mr. Cohen is in attendance now. So with regard to the ordinance referral, Mr. La Place, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Chair. Before you tonight, you have a draft ordinance referred by the Council, Ordinance 2021-34, which amends and clarifies the affordable housing requirements for new multi-unit residential projects in Princeton. The board has been asked to review this in terms of considering whether it is in compliance with the Princeton Community Master Plan. Introduced on November 22nd, 2021, reintroduced on November 30th, and scheduled for a public hearing before the Council on December 21st. This draft ordinance amends sections of the existing ordinance 2020-15 that you mentioned, Chair, in order to address the municipality's constitutional obligation to provide its fair share of very low, low and moderate income housing. This was, of course, part of our fair share housing plan as directed by the Superior Court of New Jersey. The ordinance is intended to provide insurances that affordable units are created with controls on affordability over time. The purpose of this ordinance is to mandate a minimum 20% of affordable housing units in projects throughout Princeton with more than five residential units at a density of six or more units per acre. And you have the ordinance, along with my cover memorandum. It was the opinion of staff that this is very much, this ordinance is very much consistent with the major goals of the Princeton Community Master Plan, and that it further carries out some of the important objectives, such as encouraging more housing in Princeton, more types of housing, affordable housing in new locations, a greater diversity of housing opportunities, and, and hopefully to encourage development of housing in places where it makes sense, where existing infrastructure and transportation resources already exist. So that's an overview of what's before you this evening.
Okay, good. Are there questions or comments from other board members? Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment for the benefit of the board. Folks may remember last year when the Griggs Corner application came before us, and it did not have any affordable units included, and at least part of what this ordinance was intended to do was to try and close a loophole that was created in the, in the 2020-15 ordinance, which clarifies that, you know, that an affordable unit will be required in any project over five units. And to do it in such a way that it's compliant with state law, because state law, you know, says that you have to provide some benefit in terms of incentive, density, incentive, or so forth, to, to make that kind of requirement of every project, and so we worked very carefully on how to include that requirement for projects that, that were not covered in the first draft of the ordinance, so.
Thank you very much for, for making that clear. I'm glad to see this come before us. Are there any other questions or comments, Mr. Taylor?
From my perspective, it's, it's clear to me that, as Michael indicated, that the extreme detail of this proposal is entirely warranted. It's clear that for anything that's important to our town as this legislation, it must be extremely detailed. What I've learned in my experience over the years with very detailed such legislation, for all the reasons it was done here, is that there are invariably surprises, there are unintended consequences from the very nature of detail that, to the extent possible, ought to be at least touched base with when the legislation is approved. So when I think about what kinds of unintended consequences we might consider, one missing piece from my perspective is, for example, the critical definition in a clearly definitional piece of legislation of the term household. It's not clear what exactly household involves, what it's comprised of. We don't have a sense whether a household is a group of people who meet all other criteria and simply decide to live together, or is it grandparents and children and various common sense definitions of family? It's not clear. Secondly, when a household, however defined, is approved, what happens down the road if, for any reason, and this would be a positive development, the household moves on, its income levels grow? Are there any guidelines with respect to staying or leaving that are appropriate? Thirdly, when I look at the legislation, I don't know whether, as New Jersey legislation, we're talking about New Jersey residents? Are we talking about only those of Princeton and Mercer County? Are we talking about anyone who enters the state and chooses Princeton as a place of residence? It's not clear. And so it just seemed to me that the issue of unintended consequences should at least be tabled, and maybe others have some similar thoughts about something that perhaps should be better clarified. I would tick off those household items as examples of my point. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Mueller, you want to speak to the, the question, if you can, of, of what comprises or defines a household for these purposes? Is it, is as few as one person occupying a dwelling, or any number of, any number of people?
It's been traditional. I don't know if there's a definition, and I'd ask Michael to jump in, and Derek, if there's a definition in our ordinances, but under the case law, it's a group of individuals living together. They don't have to be blood related.
They don't need to be family, for example.
Right. But Michael, do you, and Derek, do you?
That's correct, Jerry. We, both ordinances have definitions of fam, or households, and it's pretty broad, so.
Yeah, okay.
Can I try and throw in something on this?
Certainly. Go ahead, Mr. McGowan.
Well, and this was a little confusing at first. What you have is part of the UHAC ordinances, Uniform Housing and Affordability Controls, which you don't have all of them. And, and, and part of, the other part of those controls go into household size, talk about households and, and household size. So it's not, there's, it's not like there's no definition. It's just not, you don't have that in front of you. You can look it up if you, if you like, but they, they are part of the, the UHAC rules, which aren't in front of us. Those parts.
And Mr. Bridger noted that, that they do exist in other ordinances. I'm not sure which those are. I've seen Councilwoman Sacks raise her hand a couple of times.
I was just gonna say, sort of expand on what Alvin was saying, but, but this ordinance was the result of multiple meetings between Councilman Cohen and myself, and our affordable housing attorney, and the Fair Share Housing Center. It was, and reviewed extensively. There was really not much room for us to do anything differently than what was there, and to the extent that something is not clear for us, it is, most of what's in this ordinance is statutorily pretty cut and dried. And I, but to the, the definition of household, I know that in the Code Harmonization Group that meets weekly, I think, maybe David, Michael, Derek, I know we, we discussed that quite a bit, and I can't remember where we landed, but I know we landed somewhere.
Well, I mean, what Jerry and Derek said was true, is that we, where we landed was on the side of not dictating who can consider themselves a household, because there are all sorts of equity concerns around that. You know, same-sex couples, I mean, that's in the past a little bit, but there are lots of different circumstances under which people can choose to live together that we don't want them, we don't want to mix in in terms of trying to define what that is. So, as Derek said, it, that's where we landed, was that it's pretty broad, but it's pretty broad because of those kinds of concerns of not discriminating against people who decide to live together for any number of reasons.
And there's case law that supports that, where there was a municipality that had limited, that had a regulation that said a household is, has to be blood related, and the court struck that down. So this is all consistent.
But I do also want to speak to John's other question about qualification, because this came up at a recent meeting that I was in, and I learned that families are income qualified every year in rental housing. They are not often asked to leave, but the information is gathered, and they can be asked to leave if circumstance, you know, if income changes warrant that. For ownership units, that is not the case. Once you're qualified, you own the unit, you are, they don't requalify, and you are not asked to leave, even if you go above the income limit that qualifies.
My, my experience is then, once you're in and you qualify, you're in, and you stay until you decide to leave.
Great. Mr. La Place, and then Ms. Sacks?
Yeah, Chair, I just wanted to remind the board that the task before them this evening is to clearly focus on the fact of whether this draft ordinance is not inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the Community Master Plan. Would the intent, the overall intent of this ordinance is to make more broadly and more effectively the provision of at least 20% affordable housing in projects throughout Princeton, multi-unit residential projects. So I just wanted to sort of refocus the discussion a little bit.
Fair, fair enough. Thank you for that. Ms. Sacks?
Yeah, and I, to Michael's point, yeah, we're not, we're not here for a legal analysis, but I just did want to reassure John that if there are any questions about things left hanging out there, there are a lot of attorneys that reviewed it, and it refers to other, you know, framework of laws that regulate this, but also to your, your question about unintended consequences, which I thought was an excellent one, and one of the reasons why this was delayed was because I actually had a real concern about that, and I was concerned that it might actually have the unintended consequence of disincentivizing the smaller gentle density infill of smaller projects, because it would then be too expensive for the mid, for, for the smaller developers to, to do those sorts of projects. Councilman Cohen has convinced me that, because we have our overlay zones, that my fears were, were.
Overblown was the word that I used.
I don't think they were overblown, but.
I'm just saying the word I used.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. I think that's helpful. Are there other, other comments or questions? Mr. Mueller?
Go ahead, Mr. Mueller.
Quinn first, and then Mr. Mueller.
It's not about the ordinance itself, but a comment Alvin made, that, that for rental projects, people just could stay in there pretty indefinitely, even if they're above, even though they, they're no longer qualified. I think it's a real issue, because you wind up having people in affordable units who are not affordable households, but that's a separate issue, but somebody should be addressing that. And I know in another town, in West Windsor, they have a provision that if you're not, you have to be requalified, and if you can't qualify, then, then you, the lease is not, should not be renewed, but that's more in the, in the abstract than reality, because the reality is quite similar to what Alvin is indicating. But it's still, it's still an issue, I think. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just express the hope that the, that this ordinance would be celebrated to the same extent as the, the previous ordinance, when it was discovered that the 20% had turned to 15%. I, I would hope that the new ordinance gets as much attention as the, as the previous, as the previous ordinance did, because we're, once again, Princeton is leading the way in affordable housing by setting a higher bar than what is required and what's recommended by the courts. So, if, what you heard was me patting everyone on the back.
Great point, and a good thing to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim.
Other comments?
Well.
Good talk.
I do, I know. I do have another question, and I got a kind of an approach here. You know, I, I think we, all of us, have to be able to, to ask questions about the substance of the ordinance, and not just say, well, it's been reviewed, and it's been reviewed by, by, you know, by attorneys and everything else. You gotta, you gotta give us an opportunity to, to, to comment on some things that may be a little bit out of, out of just the narrow purview of whether it's consistent with, with the, with, with the master plan. That's just that comment. What I, what I am, what I, what I am, want to ask about is you've listed three items in the ordinance that, that could be triggered as a benefit. You know, the misrezoning, the granting of a devariance, I get, I get those. How is the, just can you expand a little bit on the thought, saying a newer amended redevelopment plan, rehabilitation plan? That sounds like it's beneficial to the municipality. How is that beneficial to a developer? Do you know what I'm talking, do you know where I'm talking about, what I'm talking about?
Definitely. So that's a capital R redevelopment plan, Alvin, just to, to make clear. So that's when a site is designated as an area in need of redevelopment, and generally, special rules are put in place. Not only, but generally, special rules are put in place in a redevelopment zone to facilitate the redevelopment, to incentivize the redevelopment.
And then, okay, so that has, okay. Now I get that.
And just, just to add on to that, I think, isn't the idea of having that in there spelled out also that you, that it, it, it means that the town couldn't sign a redevelopment agreement with somebody that, that has less than 20% affordable in it as a way to get around this ordinance?
That's how I read it, actually.
Yeah.
Good.
If the density and number of units criteria are satisfied.
Right, right.
Okay, would, would someone like to?
One more, one more, one more. I'm hesitating, I'm hesitating to raise this. You, you, again, you printed all this, the stuff from, from UHAC here, and as I read through, one of the things had to do, and this is, and this is nothing new, this seemed to be, that, that was present, it had to do with saying that a developer can't make a cash contribution in lieu of building a unit. I agree almost 95% of the time. The issue it gets to be when it comes to a sale, a purchase of a very low-income unit, it doesn't work. You can leave it there, you can do it, but you cannot, you cannot have a very low-income unit that's also a sale. The income level is too low. And if you do, unless you want to provide, unless the town's gonna say they want to provide a subsidy. So I mean, if you don't correct it now, you're gonna have to correct, you're gonna have to do it sometime. It's, it's not gonna work. And that's, and that's a matter of experience. And that's, and that's a matter of experience with, with working with this. So personally, I'd say, make, try and make an exception that if it's a very low income and if it's a sale unit, that there should be an application made to maybe waive that portion of the rule that says, you know, the developer can't make a cash contribution. Maybe that, you know, that's the way we went it, but that's, that's, that's an issue.
Okay.
The problem with that is then we wouldn't be getting the very low-income units, which we are required to.
No, no, you get them, they'd just be rental units, they wouldn't be.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's what they have to do because a lot of developers fork at having for-sale market units and rental affordable units, but be that as it may, I mean, you have to address that.
Okay. So that's how this would play out is with rental units. And I don't know that this board would recommend a change that would require a reintroduction, but I leave that to board members to discuss. I think this is a good change. To me, it seems very consistent with, with the master plan and if there are tweaks that need to happen in the future, then then we can, then, you know, as circumstances arise and make clear the need for same, then hopefully they will happen. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move, I'll, I'll move to, and maybe Jerry can help me phrase this, but I, I would move to, you know, I guess state the board's opinion that this, that this ordinance is consistent with the Princeton master plan.
Yeah, that's it. It's fine.
Or is it the amended, amended ordinance?
The ordinance before the board.
The ordinance as amended, yeah, yes. Well, yes, the ordinance that's before the board that was introduced at council.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Oakman, seconded by Ms. Sacks. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Carrie?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Like I said, that, that was a, a good discussion. So thank you, everybody. Now we have several resolutions of approval, starting with Simplify Living Incorporated. This is a minor site plan with variances at 2325, 23-25 Humbert Street, file number P1919-746PM.
And I, I have, if I could ask, just for a couple of changes that I saw necessary as I was reviewing it today in preparation for this meeting. First on page, it's on my page 13, it's paragraph 32. It's the next to the last sentence. Moreover, the approach supports several master plan goals, particularly with respect energy-saving principles, PALS, that should be obviously PRI-N-CI, P-L-E-S. So if you can make that change, Carrie, I'd appreciate that. And then just two quick things on, well, one, I'm sorry, two ethical things on page 28, this is end of variance A, just next to the last line, offset should be one word rather than two. And most important, on the last, the last item, page 42, you, it says sewer connection fee of $12,411 shall be paid. Well, Jim and I just went through this with another applicant where we put in the amount in, which was the amount at this point in time, but that change is yearly and that's recalculated, it's a result of requirements, state statute and local ordinance. So I recommend, I know Jim supports this because we talked about it, taking out of 12,411. So it'll just read the sewer connection fee shall be paid prior to the issuance of building permits.
Okay, can you do me a favor and send me an email with your suggested changes in the beginning because I did miss that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, thanks for that, Jerry.
Yep.
Would someone like to move this resolution?
I'll, I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Capizoli. Is there a second?
Backing.
Seconded by Mr. McGowan. Carrie, call the roll, please. Carrie, you're on.
Sorry, I muted myself. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Good. Next up, we have 145 Witherspoon LLC. This is, did I just do this one? I'm so sorry.
No.
I didn't, okay. Turn the page over. 145 Witherspoon LLC, this is a minor site plan with variance at 145 Witherspoon Street, file number P2020-912PM. Any comments on this, Jerry?
No, no.
Any questions or comments from the board or staff? And if not, would someone like to move it?
I'll move the resolution.
Moved by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Cohen. Call the roll, please, Carrie.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have 10 Acre Foundation. This is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances at 884 Great Road. This is file number P2121-043P.
We're still awaiting some input, so this is not ready for, for the board.
Ah, okay. Thank you. Did the, maybe the updated resolution reflected that and I'm looking at the wrong one. Next up, we have, excuse me?
That was still a draft, yeah.
Okay. Princeton Edens LLC and Princeton Shopping Center Residential Urban Renewal LLC. This is preliminary and final major site plan and minor subdivision at 301 North Harrison Street, file number P2121-084P/MS.
I'll turn that over to Frank because Frank handled that.
Mr. Regan, go right ahead.
I just have one correction along the lines of what Jerry did with the sewer connection fee and it's on page 16 under item J. We actually had, I had actually removed the amount, but there was some additional language that's left over and it's the third paragraph and it should just read the applicant shall be required to pay the sewer connection fees at the time of the issuance of the building permits for the residential building period. The remainder of that sentence should be deleted. And Carrie, I can send you subject to anybody else's comments and changes. I can send you.
Thank you.
That's all I had, Chair.
Any questions or comments from board members? And if none, would someone like to move this?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Capizoli. Carrie, call the roll, please.
Truthfully, I didn't bring that with me and I don't have it on my sheet. I am so sorry. Can someone read out to me who was present that meeting?
No. Yeah, I can read it here. Let's see. Voted for Wilson, Capizoli, Cohen, McGowan, Oakman, O'Donnell, Quinn, Sacks, Tex Arney. So, everybody.
Okay. Let me roll, do a roll call. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last of the resolutions is Trustees of Princeton University. This is Environmental Sciences and School of Engineering and Applied Sciences, otherwise known as ESNCs. Ivy Lane and Prospect Avenue, block 49.01, lot 5, and block 50.01, lot 18. This is file number P2020-872P. Any comments or corrections from anyone? Seeing none, would someone like to move this?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Ms. Capizoli and seconded by Mr. McGowan. Roll call, please, Carrie.
Thank you.
A good, thanks.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes. Okay, well, I'm glad to get all of those taken care of. That's good. Next up, we have an application. This is continued hearing or an application at 21 Wiggins LLC. This is a major site plan at 21 Wiggins Street, block 27.02, lots 42, 43, and 44. This is file number P2121-030P.
I wanted to announce before we begin that both Mr. Cohen and Mr. O'Donnell listened to the recording from November 4th and are eligible to vote.
Great. Thank you very much for that.
Everybody now eligible to vote?
Those who are eligible, Mr. Oakman can step away. He's the only one that was not there.
Yeah.
Everyone else is eligible.
Okay.
Okay.
So I believe that we had finished with the applicant's presentation, but there were some open questions related to the receipt, pending receipt of soil test results that Mr. Purcell might opine upon. I see, Mr. DeGresia, that you're itching to talk. Is there, is there anything, Mr. Mueller, administrative that we need to say or do before I turn things over to Mr. DeGresia for a few minutes?
No, I, I had, Sunday, there was an exchange of emails between Christopher and me about the number of bedroom, one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units, where I thought the program that they've laid out is not consistent with UHAC. And I have a feeling that Christopher is going to address that because Mr. Marchetti is here and I assume he's, he is an expert on that issue. But that's really the only thing. And it was a separate issue that I also indicated in the SPRAB report, they talked about the requirement in, in our ordinances of integrating units with the market units to the maximum extent feasible. So there were no lesser position than the other units and I thought that that should be addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. DeGresia.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry, too. That's a good segue. Madam Chair, you're correct. We had finished going through our Exhibit A1, which was a 24-page slide presentation. We completed our engineering and architectural testimony and then I believe the board had a number of questions. Since then, to address some of those questions, we brought some of our consultants or hired actually additional consultants and we have a couple of them here tonight to present a little bit of testimony to respond to some of the questions that the board raised. As Jerry indicated, we had some correspondence regarding, back and forth regarding the bedroom and I think I'll probably start with that, address that issue upfront, then go through a couple of the other questions that the board had and go through. So first of all, I, I agree with Jerry that when I had looked at the regulations, I was looking at an older version which had a one-bedroom requirement that was since removed from the Uniform Housing Affordable Controls. So we did adjust the layout and converted, well, actually switched location and converted the, one of the affordables, the, I should say, the affordable one-bedroom to a two-bedroom. So in total, we have three two-bedroom units and one three-bedroomed units that will be affordable housing units. So I think, Jerry, you and I are on the same page on that.
Yeah.
Yep. So thank you for bringing, yeah, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
And Christopher, you indicated the location has been changed. Do you have?
Yeah, so I, I thought, yeah, I'm going to start off with, I think it's appropriate to have my architect bring up and we have a, I guess we can mark it as A2. It's a single slide of the floor where the unit was located and its location is being shifted. So what we will do is, yeah, we'll mark this as Exhibit A2 and essentially it is the third floor plan showing essentially what's being changed in green. So I'll call my architect. I'm not sure which one's going to be talking about this.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk about it, Chris.
Okay. So you're still under oath and you've been qualified?
Yes. Yeah, so the original floor plan for the third floor showed the one-bedroom unit in the center as the affordable unit on this floor, but we moved the unit to its, the left into a two-bedroom affordable unit. So on this floor, both of the affordable units are in the corner. Both of them have views in, in multiple directions. And on the second floor, nothing has changed. There's still an affordable two-bedroom unit and an affordable three-bedroom unit, which Mitch can bring up.
And that unit you were just describing fronts or looks out on Wiggins?
It looks out on Sylvia Beach Way. And then the corner, the corner unit to the left, plan on the left, looks onto, yes, Wiggins Street. And then the corner unit on the right is adjacent to the neighboring property.
Okay.
Jerry, one of the things that you've mentioned, and I know we've spoke about this in some of the other meetings with HPC and SPRAB, the actual locations of these units are pretty desirable, especially now with this new shift. So all of the affordable units, all four of them now have light coming in from two different sides. They're all corner units. They also all now have bathroom balconies. The less desirable units are the three units that face that direction and they're all market units. Their only view is towards the PSC and G station. So now all the affordable units have light coming in from two sides and are, you know, are, are at different floors and we still meet the intent of that, the ordinance, because there, there's, you know, they're not in the least desirable location, which are those three. and, uh, we will meet the intent of that, um, the ordinance, because there, there's, you know, they're not in the least desirable location, which are those three center units.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I just wanted this to be addressed. You know, from my point, I, I don't make the decision, obviously the board's gonna make the decision, but I don't have any issues with how you've rearranged things.
Okay, and we also have, um, Tony here, Marchetta, Marchetta, to go through and talk about how we meet the requirements if the board wants to hear it. Otherwise, we can move on to some of those other questions that the board had.
Well, I would, I would appoint for the board that in terms of UHAC, you admit the requirements, um, so I don't know that Ms. Marchetta's testimony is necessary, but certainly it's your prerogative to put him on if you would like.
Okay, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll wait to hear if the board has any questions or concerns about that, and if not, I'll move on to our, our next consultant.
I have a question, um, which is for Jerry, um, I think I'm really quite impressed that you've reversed and, and actually put the affordable units as the most desirable units, and I'm wondering, has that ever happened? Do, and I'm, I'm not aware of an applicant ever doing that, are you? Does anyone else have any institutional memory of that having happened? I think that's really quite lawful, and I just wanna.
I'd agree with you, I'd agree with you, Mia, and then I think it would be very unusual, to say the least.
Yeah.
I agree with you too, Mia, I, I've never seen it, and I'm delighted to see it, and I thank the applicant for doing that.
Yeah.
We're trying to do the right thing.
Thanks, Aubrey, yes.
I guess, re- related to this, I had one other question, is there still a very low-income unit?
Yes.
In these four?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I saw that this, the bedroom discussion, I said, I, you know, I see that, but I, I didn't, for some reason, I thought I saw something where there wasn't gonna be a very low-income unit.
No, we, we still have, have that.
Okay.
The bedroom count changed.
Okay.
I think it was a single, uh, bed before, now it's a two-bedroom.
Correct.
Yep.
Very low.
Oh.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
We're gonna meet the regulations.
Well, you're, you're, you're going above and beyond, it looks like, uh, in, in some ways. So again, for that. Uh, are there other questions, um, that relate to this topic that Mr. Marchetta?
I'm here.
Or, or anyone else on behalf of the applicant? I'm not seeing any, um, any other questions from the, from the board, uh, Mr. Degrassia.
Okay, that's, that's great, so, um, I will move on to, uh, our next, which is, you know what? I, I think I'll bring in Andrew Stefan next. Andrew, are you out there?
I am here, yes.
Oh, Christopher, he, he has not been sworn, has he?
Correct, he has to be sworn and qualified.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that, oops? Okay, so what is your name?
Andrew Stefan.
Okay, the Audrey Haines.
So he logged in under my, uh, I gave him the, the link to the, to the, uh, meeting tonight, so he's, he's got my name.
Okay. Okay, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So it's one or firm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Andrew Stefan, S.T.E.F.F.E.N.
Thank you.
And, uh, Andrew, can you tell us a little, so just a little bit of background? So at the last meeting, uh, a couple of board members, and I think it might have even been mentioned in the SCRAP report, had some questions about the location of the building, uh, close to the PSC and G building. So, um, Andrew is actually a new member of the consultant team that was specifically hired to take a look at health and safety concerns related to electromagnetic radiation and, and, um, to, to evaluate that for us. So, um, with that in mind, Andrew, can you give us a little bit about your background and education?
Sure. Um, I earned my bachelor's degree in electrical engineering from the University of Iowa. Worked for Sergeant Lundy for twelve years as a project engineer and project manager, um, working on substation and transmission line projects. Um, I've been licensed as a professional engineer in Illinois for eight years. Um, and over the past twelve years, um, I prepared a number of, uh, studies for clients which examined the electrical effects of, um, substations and transmission lines, including a, uh, study for Atlantic City Electric, as well as one for PSENG in the state of New Jersey. Um, I've also participated in some projects in the state of California, um, as well as Alberta, Canada. So I'm very familiar with, um, the established standards, um, for electric and magnetic fields.
We like to present him as an expert in the field.
Uh, we accept your qualifications. Um, did you mention whether you're licensed in the state of New Jersey?
I am not currently licensed in the state of New Jersey.
And, Mr. Muller, could you just clarify, uh, that that is or is not acceptable?
Yeah, I, I think it's acceptable, um, he's really testifying because, uh, as a result of, of his experience as opposed to his, uh, um, degree, and, and I, I, I think it's okay.
Great. Thanks very much.
He has license, yeah.
Good. Okay, go ahead, ahead, uh, Mr. Stefan.
Thank you. Um.
Yeah, so you, I, I just wa, so we were asked by, uh, the applicant here to take a look at the issue. Can you explain to the board, um, what was done and, um, your, I guess, your, your, your feelings on, uh, the results?
Sure, I can, um, can I present, um, that, uh?
Yes, do you have it, uh, available, or do you want me to?
I, I do have it available, yes. Um, so I'd like to bring up a, a figure here.
So we can mark this as Exhibit A three, and it's sort of like a Google Earth, uh, view of the property. Um, and it has magnetic field measurements taken on December third, twenty twenty-one, um, at the, the property location.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Degrassia. So, um, PSENG personnel were able to visit the site and take, um, magnetic field measurements. Um, as you can see here, um, at, at the corners as well as, um, the interior of, of the property, um.
I'm sorry, I, I missed, who, who took the measurements?
Uh, PSENG personnel.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, some, some background on, um, so magnetic fields, um, you know, electrical substations such as the, um, PSENG substation, uh, located near the proposed apartment building, um, will emit electromagnetic fields to, you know, all the surrounding properties. Magnetic fields are measured in units of GOS, um, and they are commonly reported in Milli GOS, uh, where one thousand Milli GOS is equal to one GOS, so.
Is that G O S S?
I'm sorry.
Is that G?
G A U S S.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, so as you can see on, on the figure here, that is, that is being shared, um, the measurements that, that were taken, uh, range from three Milli GOS, um, at the corner of Wiggins Street and Sylvia Beach Way, um, and drop down to zero point eight, zero point zero eight Milli GOS, um, at the southeast corner of, uh, the proposed property. Um, an international commission, uh, called the International Commission on Nine Ionizing Radiation, um, establishes an exposure limit of two thousand Milli GOS for the general public. Um, so the highest measurements that were observed are approximately, um, six hundred fifty times lower than the levels established by the commission. Um, you know, the, the measured levels, um, as presented here are consistent with background levels, um, that are typical for a suburban environment.
Andrew, just so we can have an idea, when you take like, uh, common household projects, um, uh, products, and you're using them, what kind of MG rating would they have? Do you have a couple of those you can share with us?
I, I do, actually. Um, so as, as Mr. Degrassia was saying, all the household appliances, um, that use electrical energy will create magnetic fields. The National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences, um, surveyed some household appliances and measured the corresponding magnetic fields near the devices. Some of the common field levels that they observed are for a vacuum cleaner, um, sixty Milli GOS, an electric shavers, twenty Milli GOS, dishwasher, ten Milli GOS, electric range, eight Milli GOS, um, a can opener was a hundred and fifty Milli GOS, surprisingly high. Um, and a, as you can see, all of the everyday, uh, everyday items, um, that I just mentioned, um, emit magnetic fields that are significantly higher than all the values that were measured. Um, you know, for example, the highest level of three point zero Milli GOS is, uh, is, is two point six times less than, um, an electric range.
And, and what, what has, what is your conclusion from, um, the, the information?
So, i- i- in, in summary, you know, the, this, the PSENG substation located near the proposed apartment building, um, you know, emits low levels of magnetic fields to all the surrounding properties. Um, however, the field measurements taken have demonstrated, excuse me, um, field measurements taken have demonstrated that all the levels are well below the established limits, um, and therefore the residents of the, uh, proposed building will not be exposed to harmful levels of magnetic fields.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, Mr. Stefan, can you, um, indicate whether there are any differences in standards for sustained exposure versus for occasional exposure?
Um, there are not any solid standards that, um, differentiate between sustained, um, and intermittent exposure.
Are there?
When you say solids, standards, what do you mean by that?
Uh, I mean, I'm sorry, um, uh, so, um, the, uh, by solid standards, I mean, um, published standards that are out there. You know, if you start doing some Google searches, you may find, um, you know, reports published by, you know, s- some research lab that may have done a study that may have found, uh, you know, to establish some, some sort of limitation, but, um, in terms of, uh, um, you know, a widely accepted, uh, standard published by a, um, you know, a, a government-accepted agency, that there are no, you know, differentiations.
Mr. Chow?
In, what, what time of the day did you measure here? It's, uh, December third was a Friday. What time was it done, taken at?
Uh, these, these were taken in, in, in the morning, early in the morning.
And does, does the magnetic field change as the demand load at the substation change through the day? So let's say you have peak loading, like at six o'clock when everybody gets home, would we expect the magnetic field to be stronger?
Um, yes, if the, if the load, um, increases, the, the, the peak could increase as well, um, but, um, it, it's, it's difficult to say what exactly the, the levels would increase to. I would not expect them to, um, increase significantly, um, you know, beyond the range, uh, sorry, let me, let me rephrase that, please. Um, I would not expect the levels, um, associated with peak loading to exceed the, uh, two thousand Milli GOS limit that, that we've established.
But I guess, you know, if it's at nine o'clock in the morning, many people are out, the load's the lowest, um, but then when people return home, that's when you're, when the, the demand is the peak. So the, the Milli GOS, when people get home in the evening, is, is some higher number. Is that correct?
It, it would be a higher number. Um, I don't, I don't want to speculate too much, um, regards to what the numbers would be, but, um, it, it, it's been shown that the, um, the, you know, the Milli GOS readings and magnetic fields are roughly proportional to the, you know, to the, to the load on the system, say. Um, and if, uh, substation were, you know, say loaded to fifty percent at nine in the morning, um, then the measurements could double.
So with, with doubling, even at the highest point, you're still looking at, instead of three, six, it's Milli GOS?
Correct.
Are there other questions for Mr. Stefan? Okay.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Degrassia, do you have anyone else that you would like to, um, present testimony?
I do. We had another question, um, that was raised at the last meeting, um, regarding, uh, you know, any type of environmental concerns with the property. The testimony from Aubrey Haines was that when he purchased the property, we, uh, took a look at and evaluated, um, as a key process, um, doing our environmental due diligence, you know, performing the phase one, and, um, I, I wanted to bring up, um, our consultant that was involved and went through the process, and just to let the board know exactly what was done, um, to get us to the point where, um, we didn't have any concerns with the environmental condition. So that is, um, Jim Walsh, are you there, Jim? Yeah, I see you.
Yep.
Jim, we don't have you sworn in yet, so, uh, Jerry?
So if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So it's one or firm, state your full name and spell your last name.
Uh, my name is James Walsh, W.A.L.S.H., I go by Jim.
Jim, thank you. Oh, thank you. Can you please, uh, tell us a little bit about your experience and, uh, education, so I can qualify you here?
Sure, uh, I have a Bachelor of Science degree from Oneonta State, uh, College in New York. Um, I, uh, I've been working in the environmental field in New Jersey for nineteen years, um, all with SSG Barco. Um, I'm a licensed, uh, um, tank closure and subsurface evaluator through the D E B. Um, and I'm the Vice President of SSG Barco currently.
We'd like to present him as an environmental consultant, um, who was used as in, 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 uh, acquisition of the property.
Thank you, we, we accept your qualifications.
Thanks.
So Jim, can you describe, uh, what was done?
Uh, yeah, in, uh, June of twenty twenty, we did, uh, a common, um, it, uh, environmental due diligence, uh, phase one on the property. Um, we identified, um, three recognized environmental conditions, um, and only one that we wanted to further investigate in the phase two. Um, and that was, uh, as, as Andrew just detailed, the, uh, the PSENG substation that borders the property. Um, we, uh, we recommended, um, surface sampling along the property line, uh, for, uh, PCBs, pesticides, and metals, um, priority pollutant metals. Um, we took, uh, three samples along the property line, um, as, uh, surface samples, so zero to six inches, um, and, uh, and everything passed. Uh, PCBs were non-detect across the board. Um, there were a few pesticides, but all below standards, uh, and the only, uh, metal that, that came up was arsenic, again, all below standards. Um, so, uh, we, uh, that, that was, uh, that pretty much concluded what, um, the, in the phase two, um, and, uh, and what we were looking for.
Uh, one of the, the issues or concerns that a board member raised was, uh, um, a, a location of a nearby, um, site that was contaminated. I'm sure that popped up in your, uh, phase one, because that's essentially what a phase one does, is evaluate
Yeah.
um, the records and determine what's out there, and, uh, can you tell us? The records and determine what's out there and can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, so that's the, the, the Princeton Gas Works. That, that does. Is in the location of the property. And that, I know historically that has been. You know, between Witherspoon and Spring. Spring Street and, and Wiggins. However, the, in, in 2016, there was an RAO issued for that site restricted use. And, and there's a CEA. That's also on that site and that's, that stands for classic, classification exception area. And a CEA is there for groundwater only. And that. Is fully delineated by the, you know, whoever the consultant was at the, on the property who issued the RAO. And also continually monitored. So if there are any changes or migration of those contaminants that are in that water in any direction. Then, then that would be obviously alerted to the D E P. And, and I would imagine they would obviously then alert neighboring. Neighboring properties or anyone who might be affected. By that. And take, you know, the proper remedial actions.
So for a layperson, when a site like that is discovered to be uncontaminated. They don't just deal with the property, they do testings and boring and determine when you say. Fully delineated. That, that's the process of finding out where that plume is or where the contamination is and outlining exactly the extent of it. And what you're saying in this case is it doesn't cross over into the property, it's been never located on the property. That all of that testing shows exactly where it is. And it was cleaned up and to the extent the areas that weren't, there's monitors in place that as of today still record. What's going on so that there's no migration detected based on your, what the records that you reviewed. So you don't have a concern from that standpoint for this.
Yes, that, that's accurate, what you just said, and no, I don't have a concern from, from the, the coal or the Princeton Gas Works rather.
And, and your only concern after all doing it was the phase two was that if there was any other type of things from the PSCNG. And that's why you suggested those soil testings.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I think that concludes, unless you had anything else to add?
Nope.
Just, I guess, a quick follow-up question, and that is that. Can we assume then that at least some of the monitoring taking place to make sure the delineated area doesn't change? At least some of that modern, monitoring is happening between. Or. Adjacent to this property line, the line of the property that we're looking at, as opposed to being elsewhere on the site, you know. Between. The middle of the property and the library, for example, or. Properties to the north, south.
It, it, I don't know the exact location of the monitoring wells, but the, the CEA area. Is actually not even on the lot that borders. These three lots. So meaning the, the lot where the PSCNG substation currently is. The CEA is actually more towards the corner of Witherspoon and Spring Street. So it's almost like on the opposite end of that, of that box right there. From where this site is, 21 Wiggins is, is. Is located.
Thanks for clarifying.
But, but yeah, just to further, there would be, there's monitoring wells surrounding that area. So there, there would be something there that would trigger, you know, everyone to realize that, that the plume is moving.
Okay. Mr. Quinn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Walsh. You mentioned that, what's an RAO?
So an RAO is a, it's, it's short for response action outcome. And that's for a site like this, a commercial site, a regulated site, commercial site. That would be a. The newer version of what's traditionally known as an NFA and no further action letter. So several years ago, the, the D E P. Transferred some of their, I guess, power, you would say, to, to private consultants. Called licensed site remediation professionals. They're the ones who issue RAOs and then the, the D E P reviews their work. To make sure it's, it's complete and accurate and kind of signs off on their work, but, but. So the, the response action outcome is essentially. The same as an NFA just issued by. A private licensed site remediation professional rather than the D E P.
Thanks, and you, you said that, that you offered the opinion that, that. The gas works was never located on the lot in. In question, the lot we're looking at, and I wonder how you. Came to that under what, what documents you reviewed to determine that? The gas that no gas work operations were on the lot and block since. That lot and block didn't exist when the gas works was in operation.
We, we went back through all the Sanborn maps that we were given and aerial maps during the phase one. And every map we saw still had a dwelling on this property. On this location, on this, on this lot and block. Or even before it was a lot, block just at that corner. So that's how I came to the conclusion that as far back as we can see, as, as far back as we can investigate. It was, it was never on that property.
Okay, and, and the testing, your testing involved soil samples at how deep?
It was zero to six inches, which is in our, in our industry, that's considered surface samples. So essentially, it was, it was at six inches.
So would, would a surface sample test capture some of the byproducts of a coal gasification? Plant?
It, it may very well, it may very well, but this, this was more geared towards the PSCNG sub. Substation that's right next door bordering the property.
Okay, because I mean, the, the substation and Heinz Plaza and the. The library, that was all of a, that was all part of one site that bordered onto. The spring of Spring Street, that where Spring Street gets its name, so. I, I, Mr. Purcell is, is with us and I, I wonder if he could. Offer an opinion about. About these reports and, and the conclusions.
I'll start by saying I have no concern whatsoever about contaminated soils on this property. I will add to the history that a, an NFA was actually issued by P, by NJDEP. All the way back in 2006. The ROA is, is actually a sort of a transfer from the NJDEP to. The, the private. Private side of things. NJDEP has no concerns at this point. As a matter of fact, they're decommissioning one of our, one of the monitoring wells, which is over on the corner of Hullfish and, and Witherspoon. So, and, and it, it is my understanding and as Mr. Walsh stated that there was never any. Any detection of any contamination on this particular property in this, in this corner. As he said, we still do have contaminated soils. In the, in the CEA and, and they are up along the corner of Spring Street and Witherspoon Street. As a matter of fact, with our Witherspoon Street project, we are dealing with. Some of that because we will be putting in new drainage systems on Spring Street. And we will have to monitor for contaminated soils on that project. But on this, on this particular property, there's never been any evidence of contamination.
Jim, have you been sworn in? I don't think you were sworn in in the first.
I was sworn in at, at, at the last.
You were, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, both of you gentlemen, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Mr. Walsh or Mr. Purcell on this matter? Okay, great, thank you, thank you both.
You're welcome.
I think. We tried to be as responsive as possible to the questions that come up, that have come up. The only other consultant I have here this evening is our traffic consultant, George Jacamar. I, he has produced a report, this is a relatively small. Project, you know, with the, the small number of units. He produced a report, there was a consultant's report, I could have him up and talk about it a little bit, or if you have any questions. Yeah, I think I'll leave it up to you, Madam Chair, if you want to hear from our consultant.
I think that we. Should hear a, a, a short summary of his findings, yes.
Okay, George? George, you were sworn in at the first meeting, I don't think you got to testify, so we do need to qualify.
Okay. I have more than 40 years of experience as a traffic engineer and planner. I'm a licensed engineer in several states, including the state of New Jersey. I'm also a professional planner in the state of New Jersey, I have testified and followed this board many, many times.
Indeed, you have, we accept your qualifications, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So we prepared a ladder, a traffic ladder dated May 27th, that kind of. Analyzed the additional traffic and we, we're adding some uses, we're subtracting some uses, so the basic impact is very, de minimis. We're talking about as, at worst, two to three vehicle trips that would be added in the morning peak hour or evening peak hour. I think your consultant reviewed the traffic ladder and he agreed with the traffic analysis. Your consultant asked us to address parking and I think, you know, we did not address that in the ladder because the project satisfies the. The municipality's parking requirement. And the only thing I can add is that the spaces that will be supplied will be assigned. So that individual users know which space they can use. And the tenants, the tenants will pay extra for the parking, so we're talking about unbundled parking, which is generally the recommended way to do that. The one thing where we kind of disagree a little bit with your consultant. They suggest, your consultant McMahon suggests, and they can, you know, I think. They are on the line as well, to add a no pedestrian sign at the entrance to the parking area. Because pedestrians, they have the ability to walk to the building using the path that's between the parking area. And the building, the main building. We would recommend against it for several reasons, and number one, it's very difficult to enforce that kind of rule. Number two, that's a kind of sign that pedestrians like to violate, you know, many pedestrians don't pay attention to that type of sign. But the most important reason for me not to install a sign like that is we do not want to give a kind of sense of. Priority to the drivers that enter that parking lot, you know, the drivers will enter, leave that parking lot. There will be pedestrians in the parking lot, we cannot, you know, the people that drive the car, they have to get out of the car and walk through the, the parking lot. So I, I, I don't think that sign will help, I think we, we want to. You know, make sure that the drivers continue to pay attention to the pedestrians in the parking lot, so. I would advise against that kind of sign. Otherwise, I don't think there's any issues, you know, between the analysis that your consultant did and what we did. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that, are there any questions for Mr. Jacmar?
I just respond regarding the one. Comment from our, our letter, perhaps instead of a no pedestrian sign.
I'm sorry to stop you, Mr. Mueller, you're on mute. Mr. McGinnis, have you been sworn in?
Did I swear you in, Dan?
I'm not sure, Mr. Mueller.
I don't think so, why, why do I do that now? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give is, will be the truth? So it's one, state your full name for the record.
Daniel McGinnis from McMahon Associates.
Thank you.
I just wanted to suggest perhaps instead of a no pedestrian sign, you know, discouraging them from walking in the, the driveway, perhaps a, a sign. Guiding them into the preferred walkway, although I do acknowledge that most of the, those pedestrians will be residents and used to it.
Okay, are there? Are there standard signs that, because I, I mean, I think that. I mean, both points are well taken. I don't want anything to, I would not personally want anything to signal that the vehicles have priority. And give vehicle or drivers a false sense of. You know. Predominance or whatever, and. I, I, I see no reason not to, I mean, are there, are there standard, you know, small, I don't recall seeing signs. That point out a pedestrian walkway. When it's clearly. When it clearly exists as a pedestrian. Walkway, I guess it's hard, it's hard for me to. In, as an individual board member to know whether I think this would be a good idea without seeing a rendering of. You know, what it's, what it's going to look like and what a pedestrian would encounter. Or a driver would encounter as they're at that. Particular point, so I don't know how others feel about this, I'm ambivalent, as you can tell.
For, for pedestrian, a simple entrance sign might be enough to guide them to the walkway.
Pedestrian entrance, meaning.
Maybe our consultant, our architect can show the, the image of the rendering of the, of the entrance. Because it, it, it is pretty obvious where the entrance is located.
I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, our, our feeling was that when people got there, they, they would understand that more as a driveway. Notice the, the entrance just because of the design. And we were avoiding the sign just because we felt it was visual clutter, you know, and just, we didn't think it, it would be effective. Most of the people living there know exactly how to enter and the visitors would sort of have this.
But if there is a de facto. Shortcut that takes them across. You know, that, that sort of bypasses the pedestrian walkway, that would be helpful to understand that.
Sure. So which architect do we have here?
Oh, I'll, I'll talk about this, Chris, this is Robert, so.
You're sworn in already, so.
Yes. So this is the elevation on Tulane Street showing the residential entrance, you can see. More towards the left of the screen of the parking entrance. Clearly visible, it's a, it's a large curb cut and a larger opening to the opposite side of. The, the sign that says 60 North Tulane. We can see a small break in the brick and then next to that is the building entrance. That small break in the brick is a pedestrian access that can lead into the parking garage, you can go to the first floor. And. We can, we can see that there's a pathway from Tulane Street down into the parking area. And with access to residential lobby and a staircase. If, if necessary, the pedestrians can walk through the ADA space. The, the, the access aisle to get into the parking. To their car.
And Mrs. Smith. What would you suggest, what would you suggest the sign say?
I don't think that no pedestrian access is the right sign, I think if there was going to be one, it could recommend pedestrian access. Via this walkway.
There's the walkway as well as the vestibule entrance into the main lobby of the building, so there's two ways in that are not through the parking lot.
Yeah, I, I actually, the people would go through the vestibule, right?
Yeah.
Isn't there a door there, though? Did, I mean, did I not, didn't I see a door? Did, I mean, did I not, didn't I see a door separating the sidewalk from the pedestrian walkway?
No, there's, there's this direct access from Tulane Street into the pedestrian walkway. And then there's the, the door from the walkway into the lobby.
Madam Chair, I think it does look like it on the rendering. It did look like it a minute ago, but it's, it's opening.
So that's a, that's a door that's farther down leading into the, the second staircase.
I see, I see. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, my, you know, my feeling is, as someone said before, people are going to be walking in there whether you want them to or not. And then the question is whether you want to try to tell them not to. And I don't know what, how other board members feel about it. I think it's just something to sort of wrestle with. If, if there is a, a sign that is, you know, clean and clear and says, you know, pedestrian entrance or something, you know, great. But, but even that is not going to stop people from walking through the parking lot if they think that's going to save them ten steps, unless they're wearing a fitness watch or something. Mr. Chow?
I would say these, these bushes that are shown right at the edge of the garage kind of block the view of the pedestrian of any car that's exiting. You know, you're, you're, the, the angle that they can see into the garage is, is limited.
But I can eliminate those and create a better sightline. I think that's a good point. Thank you.
I, I think those are also representative of vegetation that will consult with the landscaper to choose appropriate vegetation along Tulane Street.
We, we, we suggested, because we, we acknowledge that we need to work on our landscaping plan, and we suggested that the board condition the landscaping on review and approval from Dan Dobomilsky, which, which, instead of coming up with some stuff and not knowing what's you're able to get nowadays, we thought it would be appropriate to sit down with Dan and, and get him to review and approve and take in his suggestions.
That sounds good.
Yeah, part of that could be looking at the safety and visibility there, which I assume Jim Purcell can look at as well, to make sure we're, we're covering all the angles.
And maybe, maybe there could be signage inside the garage somewhere, not to clutter up the sidewalk, that's, that says, "Watch for pedestrians." You know, I don't know. I, I don't want to beat this to death, but, but I think it's a valid concern. Are there other, other questions about this before we go on? Mr. DeGrazia, do you have any other folks to testify before we hear from the public?
We do not. We certainly can answer questions. We have a whole team here, but we don't have any more direct at this point.
Okay. Then I will move to open this. Yes.
I just have a couple of questions that,
Oh, go ahead.
since I wasn't at the last meeting, I didn't have a chance to ask before, I think would be appropriate, before opening to the public. So one of the questions has to do with the trash collection sequence, which was discussed at SBRAB. There were concerns about how that would happen, and I, while I promise I did watch the video, I don't recall any discussion of that in the, in the presentation about how that's been improved. It still looks like you have to come through the public lobby with the trash. It is the long sequence that there will be long obstruction of Tulane Street by a trash collection vehicle while that's taking place. So I'll just let the applicant respond to that, whether there's been a, been a change in the, obviously not the plan, but in the procedures that are proposed for trash collection.
So thank you. We have a full-service property management company, and we don't want to have a trash truck parked out in front and have a delayed time while the cans are wheeled in and out of the building. Our proposal would be for our property manager to go into the building before the trash truck were to arrive on trash day and wheel the cans out, similar to a typical residential arrangement in a residential neighborhood. Leave the cans out, have the truck pull up, dump the cans in the truck, leave the empty cans on the side, and then for the property manager to go back later in the day and wheel the cans back into the building.
Okay. And they would just leave the cans on the, on the grassy strip between the curb and the sidewalk? Is that the?
I'm not sure what the typical arrangement is. If, and if that's the typical arrangement for trash pickup, then, then we would do, that we, we would do that. I think it's relatively level along the grassy strip, so I don't think it would be a problem to do that.
Okay. I mean, that's what I do with my, with my garbage can. From the standpoint of, you know, you may have a fair number of garbage cans, and it may be deleterious to the, to the grass. I would suggest you might want to have an area of pavers or something like that that would allow you to put them out without obstructing the sidewalk, without obstructing the roadway, and without creating a, you know, damage to the vegetation.
Thank you. That's a good suggestion.
And then the, the other question, which is something that also came up at SBRAB is, you know, from a design standpoint, the relationship between the existing building and the new building is tenuous at best, and we had asked your architect to look at ways to try and make a stronger connection, whether it was use of materials, fenestration, massing, and I, and I was reviewing the minutes, and I believe you indicated, or your architect indicated, that would take a look at that. And so I'm asking what kinds of alternatives were looked at? And why none of them were deemed to be suitable? Because the drawings that we have in our packet don't show any change from what was submitted to SBRAB.
So if we can pull our architect up. Where's her?
Hello. Um, so I guess I'll start with materiality. So we were referencing other materials that are present throughout the neighborhood. We took a, a look on Google Earth at the adjacent houses throughout, like a, a couple of block radius. We found that the horizontal siding and brick were the predominant siding materials that were used in this neighborhood. So we're referencing that relationship to the neighborhood through our building by using like a, a brick base to kind of anchor the building down, and then the horizontal material from the second floor up.
Yeah, I, I did hear that testimony, but what I haven't heard is how you're relating a new building to the existing building that is attached to it, which seems to be important contextually.
Yeah, I'd like to jump in that the HBC also felt the same way, that the relationship between the existing building and the new structure was very awkward.
So one of the, one of the ways that we were connecting the two buildings, I think this was an update we made in the last presentation, David. Since I don't, if you didn't see word on it, I'm not sure you're aware, but we are providing access from the new building into the old building on the second floor.
I did see that.
So, but before, we were proposing that the second, the original house would have its own egress internally. But our new relationship, by creating a kind of circulation corridor adjacent to both spaces, is allowing that connection between the buildings. We didn't feel like it would be as good of a, a, a use of the new building to have our windows looking directly on top of the roof. So that's another reason why we have our vertical circulation adjacent to the existing house. I guess for a life safety standpoint, we can get into the need to have stair separation distances. So if you're not aware, in, in buildings, we need to have our exits a certain distance apart so that occupants don't have to travel a large distance to get to an exit. So these two locations, based on our site constraints with the parking lot below, and the minimal area we're allowed to build in due to the AHO overlay kind of required us to move the, the stair closer to the house, which, this is why we also included the elevator there to provide that kind of egress corridor, which then extends into the lobby. The second staircase, current in the middle of the building, you'll see drops right down into what would end up being a parking space. So we're taking away that because we need that separation away for, for life safety. Alternatively, you know, pulling the, kind of building be so close, and then pulling it back on Tulane Streets, creating these, these public spaces, which we've seen throughout the neighborhood. All of these houses have like outdoor patios. All of our apartments have a balcony, but we also felt that providing a communal sitting space, a community space, would be very beneficial to this house or to this development.
I think it would be helpful also, Robert, for you to show the stairway access into the basement of the existing building because that shows another element of the sort of tie between the two buildings.
Right. Mitch, do we have that shown?
It's in the, one of the exhibits.
Look at the metal exhibit.
Yep.
Yeah, so where the stair currently is, or is located, is actually kind of currently where the, the stair is for the existing house. So the location's not really changing that much. We're able to use our new stair to access the existing basement in the house so that would minimize the amount of underground or foundation work that we'd have to do for the house. So this was one more level connection, like Aubrey said, for the new building into the, into the existing house.
Yeah, I, I mean, clearly what's SBRAB, and I think HPC were concerned with that, was the physical, the visual relationship as opposed to the circulation relationship between the buildings. And, you know, I, I asked you a specific question, which is what kinds of alternatives you looked at for improving the visual relationship since this was provided to SBRAB? And I, I'm not hearing that you considered any, any improvements in your design process. Is that, is that correct?
Well, we did attempt to look at, you know, alternative circulations, but it just, the, the, where the, the massing of the building laid out and like the constraints are just, we couldn't get that to work. So, you know, the, the circulation where it's at is, is the, you know, the, the, the best case that we could get to move forward and make this building a viable option, while also complying with the, the area requirements of the units, both the market rate and the affordable housing units, which Princeton designates minimum sizes for those. In terms of materials, we looked at some other options, like metal, like more solid, flat pieces, but we didn't think that that was as relevant of a connection than the, the horizontal siding. And then obviously, like, we, we can't really put windows or openings within these fire stairs or the elevator. So fenestrations along that facade aren't really.
Well, you do, you do have fenestration into the apartments on either side, obviously.
Well, right.
But you haven't, but you haven't done anything to relate the fenestration stylistically to the existing fenestration. Or, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm going to lay off at this point, but I just have to say, and I think I, I'm, you know, this, this, this building is a little bit of a Frankenstein. You've stitched together two entirely different buildings. Like, you know, you chop the head off a corpse and you put it on to the head of another body. And I, I really am distressed at the lack of concern for the aesthetic impact on the neighborhood. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Are there other questions or concerns people would like to express before?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Tim Purcell here.
So.
I, I just want to clarify the, the waste management portion of it. The applicant just testified that they're going to be bringing the trash cans out to the street, but it's our understanding and by ordinance, they need to have a third-party waste holler pick up that trash. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yep.
Okay. It is not Princeton municipality picking up trash for them. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Other questions or comments before we go to public comment?
I just had a couple things from the HPC memo.
Please.
One is the existing house. One member, HPC member noticed that the shutters are not sized properly, and they asked if the, when the house is renovated, if they could install shutters that are sized and installed properly on the existing house. Also, there was some discussion about screening of rooftop condensers. And if LED lighting is proposed, that the lights would be within the warm spectrum, no greater than twenty-nine hundred Kelvin. And if determined in good condition, that the applicant could possibly repurpose existing brick and slate for patios. And I think there was some question about, again, the landscape, which had been proposed as a kind of monoculture, but I think that's changed since HPC.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to address it and then let Aubrey, you add some detail. Was that you, Aubrey?
Yeah, yeah. So we have agreed to screen the AC units and the rain barrels. We, the bricks that are, would be potentially reused are all sort of named bricks for donors to high tops. So I'm not sure how appropriate it would be to continue to have those named bricks there, but we'll, we'll look at it and we'll, we'll reuse what we can. We're definitely interested in doing that. I'm not sure about the shutters. I, I don't, I don't know what size would be appropriate. So if we can have more detail on that, I can respond better. But, you know, the, I think the shutters have been there for quite some time.
Right. I mean, the shutter should be sized so that when they close.
They close, they close, they act as a shutter, right?
Yeah, and I think that they're undersized. So maybe at some point they were replaced by cheaper shutters.
We'll take a look at that. The, yeah, no monoculture on the landscaping. In fact, I, I want, does this planning board give out awards for, for good landscaping? Because I want to compete for that award. Honestly, growing up on a farm, and our family still has eleven hundred acres of peaches and, and nectarine orchards, that is, and my son's a landscape architect, so we're not going to cheapen on the landscaping. So we'll work very closely with Mr. Dobromilsky and, and make sure that it's a, something that we can all be proud of. What was the other, there was another item?
Rooftop condensers will be screened.
Yep.
And we will use a warm spectrum for the lights.
Yeah, I don't know about that. Yeah, I don't know about twenty nine, twenty nine hundred Kelvin. I saw some at three thousand and thirty one hundred that looked really nice. I think we 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 don't want it to be harsh for people, um neighbors and the folks visiting the property. So we would I think the warm spectrum is is what we'd want anyway.
But you, are you saying that you? So what what again was the?
Cause I saw, I saw a definition of a warm spectrum, not at twenty nine hundred, but at third, three thousand and thirty one hundred. It's all different. Uh standards used. So um by saying it's twenty nine hundred, if it's it's twenty nine hundred and fifty, then we're we've 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 fallen out of the the requirements of what we've agreed to. So
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Haynes is saying that they agree with the warm spectrum, but they would like it to be with a cap of thirty one hundred, right, and twenty nine hundred Calvin.
Yes, thank you.
Right. I've seen it at three thousand as well.
I'm sorry, say Julie, say again, Julie.
I've seen, I've seen warm at three thousand, so I
Is everybody comfortable with it? Everybody comfortable with thirty one hundred?
I I honestly don't know because I don't know what it looks like. I mean, I totally agree with the warm spectrum. Um i- if if you were planning thirty one, Mr. Haynes and HPC asked for twenty nine, maybe we can call it three thousand.
And can can I, can I jump in again? This is really kind of, I'm I'm sorry, but this is really nitpicking. Warm spectrum is anything below four thousand Kelvin. And I I I I think that if you start putting in conditions of a specific Kelvin, i- it makes it very difficult for us as staff to verify that they put in twenty nine hundred versus three thousand versus thirty two hundred. I don't have a a a tool to determine. I can look at a warm spectrum light and know that it's warm spectrum, not a five thousand K, because I happen happen to have five thousand K in my house. Not in my house, outside my house, but I can't tell the difference between thirty five hundred and twenty five hundred. So um please, if you could, just say warm spectrum. That would be helpful.
Right, I agree.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, I a- any other other questions? Or Mr. Dugrazia, Mr. Haynes, or any of the expert witnesses before we go to public comment?
I I I can't remember if I asked this last time, um but I was just wondering how the the building will be heated and also um if there was consideration about solar panels. So sorry if I asked that question before.
It's okay. Uh we're planning on using electric um heat pump systems. Um and um as far as solar, we don't have enough rooftop surface to uh have a a a quality solar array. The we we were in the solar business for a while and what we learned was that um the smaller the array, the higher cost per per watt generated. Um and if you get really small, it gets totally uneconomic. For w- we were um guided um by the professionals and and what we've heard around town that uh stormwater was the most important environmental issue. Um so we uh installed, we were proposing a green roof, even though it's not required. Um because that um helps in multiple ways besides water retention. It also uh is an insulating um factor. Um and um and so that's the direction we went with our environmental dollars. If if there are um later on solar technologies that are um reasonable at small scale um and per 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 kilowatt um generated, then we would, we would certainly install a solar array later. So what we have agreed to is to um include conduit to provide for that. Um if down in in the future, uh such an array were were economic.
That's good um to hear. So would it, I guess, technically be considered a solar ready, would you say?
Um I I think that's that is an accurate description, yes.
Okay. Yeah, um yeah, I would, I would, I would, you know, look, you know, recommend looking into it. I I mean, I think that there are examples of kind of a combination of green roof and also solar rays. I mean, maybe the solar panels would be elevated a little bit over uh the the green roof and and potentially, and I see that there's some HVAC units up on the roof. So and and I think that um I'm I'm assuming that your tenants are gonna be paying their own utility bills, but you know, there's probably, you know, energy, electricity that's gonna be kind of general generally used. And I can imagine that the array could potentially provide for that in general, you know, hallway kind of common space electricity usage. So um yeah, I know.
Right next door, which is that parking deck. Um you could put a nice solar array over top of that parking deck. Um and we would certainly participate in a community solar project that included that. And that to me, there you've got an opportunity because you have a decent scale sized project right there.
That's a good, that's a good recommendation. Maybe the municipality should take note. Um that's good to hear. Um what was I gonna say? Oh, yeah. And uh uh the EPC, I think that to a large extent, um I think that this project meets a lot of the um things that we were um requesting in terms of um stormwater management and bike parking. Um I think that one thing that was suggested was that the building be uh zero energy ready. And I don't know if that if you looked into to that.
We've been talking to the sustainable Princeton people. Um and um we'll do whatever makes sense. Um we, it's obviously a marketing advantage for us to say to our residents who are all concerned um to make sure that they're in a residence that's um efficient and it's um that's green. Um uh they're all concerned about being as green as possible, but um we have to, it has to be economic. So um but we'll do everything we can, especially if there are um incentives that are forthcoming uh from the federal government. Um and that could be very soon, there could be significant incentives. And we would take advantage of all of them because um that to us gives us a marketing edge.
For sure, yeah. And uh there are some state incentives for for new construction. Um so I would recommend checking out New Jersey's Clean Energy Program. I think that they have some multifamily incentives. Um and also I recommend taking a look at the the passive house standard, which is kind of the 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 highest standard in terms of energy efficiency. Um you know, there's sometimes these buildings are so efficient that you don't even need a heating system. They kind of are able to to kind of retain uh the the heat within the building. So um yeah, I think that that's good, good to hear. Thank you for responding to this question.
Thank you.
It's great to hear you're using heat pump system. I'm delighted by that. Okay, any other uh questions or comment, Mr. Chow?
The heat pump, uh so there's no natural gas space heating?
No.
And then are there any other natural gas appliances in the building, water heating? You are using heat pump water?
Uh it's gonna be all electric.
Great, thank you.
That's what we like to hear. That's really terrific. Okay, um any any further questions from the board? Not seeing any. Okay, so I'll open up um the meeting to public comment. So if you are here as a member of the public uh and you have questions uh to ask or comments to make, please virtually raise your hand. Uh and this Philip will move you over uh to be a participant and will swear you in and let you speak for hopefully no more than three minutes. I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Now we have nine members in attendance and no one has their hands raised.
Okay, so public comment going once, going twice? Okay, seeing no hands raised. That means um no one has comments or questions. Uh with that, I will close uh the public comment portion of the meeting and um come back to any final comments from the board. And if not, then uh we need to begin to go over the conditions that have been discussed. Any other comments from board? I saw, Mr. Laplace, that you activated your camera. Does that mean you want to speak? No, he's shaking his head. Okay. Okay, then are we ready to talk conditions?
Mr. Taylor wants to speak.
Oh, I'm so, I'm so sorry.
One, one quick comment or observation. I was particularly moved by Mr. Cohen's comments about aesthetics. Of course, I like his choice of Frankenstein as a as an adjective, but leaving that aside, those were strong comments. And they were clearly heartfelt. And yet there was no comment whatsoever from other members of the board. I'm just wondering, i- is there is there more to this that we ought to pay attention to? There may be a conditionality, but it seemed to be a major comment. And I would appreciate it if at least we we raise one more opportunity for the board to agree, disagree, comment on Mr. Cohen's rather strong position.
Well, that's fair, Mr. Taylor. Thank you. And and Ms. Capizoli also noted that the um uh Historic Preservation Commission agreed with uh the Site Plan Review Advisory Board's um opinion that uh you know, the architecture was problematic. Um so I don't know what, Julie, do you want to weigh in here a little bit? You're muted.
Sorry, I just wanted to say that although we had um definitely uh, you know, echoing what David said about the aesthetic concerns, we also had members talking about um how this is an appropriate area for density. And given the overlay, I think um you know, it's it's kind of awkward to know how much uh you know, room we have. Like, on the one hand, the overlay is talking about density in this location, which I think we agree with. And on the other hand, aesthetically, um several members said that the aesthetics did not echo the residential part of the neighborhood. So I think there's this tension between the overlay and the density conditions and the aesthetics.
Ms. Sax.
We have a lot of architects in Princeton. I spend a lot of time with them these days. And I, they all think that one another's work is hideous. This is something that I hear on a daily basis. Not being an architect, I have no basis to judge. I think that the challenge here was a steep one, and that was uh preserving the house that was there and building something behind it in that would, um as Julie said, uh take advantage of the overlay. Um and I, it is interesting because I also have heard um just as many comments on sort of what I would consider the other side of the spectrum from what David said, which was um people who were very upset that the house was preserved and felt that the whole site should have been the building. Um and I think that um I'm I'm really very grateful that they um put the time and attention that they did into preserving this house. Um and uh I I I think that this, you know, again echoing Julie's point that we we implemented these overlays because there were underlying values of smart growth and density in our core that um uh lead to more sustainable development patterns. And um you know, uh it is difficult to build on that lot with that house and to knit it together. And there are many architects and I've heard them um say that they would have done it differently. And and I I I think that the planning board is um, you know, I think aesthetics are very subjective. Um and uh I'm I I'm not sure that that there's um a a a a an absolute right or wrong that we can determine that in that any planning board can determine. So that's my comments.
Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just, I need to push back a little bit on what Mia said because as I've told her. I I am not one of those architects who hates every other architect's work. I am very uh supportive of my colleagues. And I would not speak uh as harshly as I did tonight unless I felt this uh project was an outlier on the aesthetic spectrum. And I think that um I I I don't know if you've under misunderstood my comments, but my comment about this is that I wish that we had taken down the existing building. I think that the the new building is nice enough on its own. And it's the relationship between the two that's hideous and that uh our ordinance. You know, our ordinance to preserve the existing buildings, I think, was not intended for corner lots. It was intended, you know, to be along Nassau Street where if you preserve the front building, the new building in back is largely invisible. And so most properties that are subject to this overlay will not have the challenges that face this particular project. I agree that it's a difficult challenge on this corner where the two buildings are in are so visible together. But I, it just seems to me that no effort whatsoever was made to tie them together. And uh that's the problem. It's that they didn't even try.
Can I weigh in?
Yeah, go ahead, Serge. Yeah.
Um Sergio Kosha was sworn in uh previously. I'm the pr- design principal for Kosha Moose Architecture. So I am the one responsible for creating this Frankenstein. So I would say that I agree that that the ordinance was created for deep lots. And that we had a, and we we immediately knew that we had an unusual condition here. Uh I I think we pride ourselves and I think this building is very contextual. Um while it may be contemporary, it it does try to, for a three or for the size building that it is, try to uh address the neighborhood, because the neighborhood does have residences. It does have a parking garage adjacent. So it has a library down the street. Um and yes, the site is crowded with the existing house. It's the it's what we, the task that we were given and how the ordinance is written. And um in my mind, uh placing the, what Robert was trying to describe is the the circulation elements between the two. So you have a basically a reveal or an an opportunity for the two buildings. They don't abut immediately, but um we tried to give them as much space as possible, adding the balconies, the setbacks to give it a human scale. So a balcony allows people to understand how a human would interact with the um the building. The size of the windows really comes from, it's a modern design. We are, we can make our windows bigger now. We can make them more efficient. Everyone wants natural light in their in their living. Uh something that wasn't possible when this house was built. There were small windows with, they needed, they were double hung. They weren't of the same type. They're not insulated glazed units, so we have an ability to bring light in and also showcase the uh the inside to the outside. So um the siding, the horizontal siding, I think ties in with the scale of the and the siding that's on the house. Uh might not be. The siding on the house, but the the sort of the um the siding of the neighbors. And like we said, we, that particular house doesn't have it, but a lot of the neighbors around it have it. So then it does break down the scale. It could have been more monolithic, like the house with stucco or some other material. And again, br- uh brick is the base, the podium. Allows the sort of the top to float a little bit. And um and we tried to screen the parking as best we could so that pedestrians walking by wouldn't be as uh and the neighbors wouldn't be as affected by the cars there. The parking lot is actually the same location as the existing parking lot. So in a sense, the relationship between the parking and the house hasn't really changed. It's just that the building has been, apartment building has been introduced. So um I mean, ultimately Frankenstein was seen as as having heart and a soul and and he was misjudged. And I think that, you know, maybe this one. And I think that, you know, maybe this one has a little bit of heart. He was not, he was not, you know, he, you know, he was not considered pretty by some, but others recognized his beauty in the end. So.
We also, we also tried, starting with a three-story building in this location and taking down the existing house.
We did have, we did have that scheme, yes.
We had a full design done because we recognized the, the, the challenge here. So that was our first design. And then we brought it to the professionals and they, we had originally figured the three-story building would have, would have five units per floor, would be 15 units altogether. And then because of the quirky ordinance that eliminates the number of dwelling units under the, when you don't use the overlay, we were only able to have, I think, seven units in a, in a 15,000 square foot building, which meant that all of our numbers were upside down because we were then having to attract a super luxury tenant. And, and it just didn't work. So we then were kind of forced by the situation to go with the overlay. And the overlay defined the density and the shape of the building. You know, there weren't maximum, there weren't minimum setbacks. There were maximum setbacks. And I think, and then we had to keep the house, which we, which we would prefer not to, but we were told that that's what the community wanted. And that's what the overlay stated. So after spending months working on the three-story version of the building where we eliminated the house, we were basically by the, to, to adhere to a no variance application, which is really what we were seeking. We had to go with a design similar to what you see. And if, can we pull up a, the rendering of the, of the building that shows the, I guess, the first page of our, our presentation? Because it does show that there's a separation between the house and the, and the new building in the front where it's most visible.
The first page or like a more?
Yeah, the first page. Yeah.
It's helpful to understand this, Mr. Haynes. Thank you.
Yeah, no. Thank you for taking the time because it's, we have been wrestling with this. And, and we recognize Mr. Cohen's concerns.
I, I think the colored rendering would be even better.
Street views, please. Yes.
There we go.
You know, what, I, I think these renderings are a perfect example or a perfect illustration of what I am objecting to, which is that the front house is rendered kind of like all the other buildings that are not part of the project. It's sort of grayed out. It's, it doesn't have its materials. It, it shows that, you know, your designer was wishing it wasn't there and was pretending it wasn't there, essentially. That's, that's the design attitude. But, you know, I'm, I think, I think I've, you know, made the point. I, I think that, you know, to, you would have a hard time finding another architect other than the parent of this child defending that it was aesthetically appealing. And, and by the way, Sergio, I, I think that, I think Sergio, that a lot of what you.
That's not a fair thing to say.
Let, let Mr. Cohen, let Mr. Cohen speak and then you can, you have an opportunity. I think that a lot of what Sergio has said in defense of it was in defense of the, of the new building and not of the connection between the new and the existing. I don't dispute the large windows are nice. I don't dispute that the horizontal siding relates to other buildings on the block. But.
David, I think there's a larger, you know, the, the larger issue here is whether the overlay ordinance, whether we need to rethink the overlay ordinance. But I remember very clearly when we were discussing the overlay, it was originally just going to be on Nassau. And then we extended intentionally it down to the corner here. And then we were concerned, and in, in those discussions, and there were discussions in a variety of different contexts, the main concern that was expressed was preserving these corner houses and preserving the streetscape as you drive along Wiggins and then you get to, to pass the graveyard. And there are a number of these old houses. And so I, I know the way you're looking at it now, as you go up and down Tulane, it's dissonant. But when we were actually working on this overlay, one of the concerns that was expressed was maintaining the continuity of the streetscape of historic single-family houses that all the way to the corner. So for sure, it could be argued that since the library and the garage are there, that this corner could have been a large structure and, and the house could have been removed. You know, but then, but then where do you stop? And I do think, you know, in, in, I don't know that HPC would have been happier to see that house removed. And I think that a lot of people that have, you know, think of that road and that drive as a historic-ish part of, of Princeton. And I think there would have been a lot of people who would have been equally upset to remove that house. So, but I think there are some, you know, can, some discussions to be had going forward about the overlay and corners. And, you know, I mean, I think to your point of what are, what are the most important aesthetic objectives?
Well, this has been a, an interesting and instructive discussion and debate. I, I don't think we're going to come to an agreement. And I, I don't want to just muzzle people, but unless someone is dying to say something more about the architectural choices that were made, I think it might be a good idea to move on.
Karen?
Yes, Mr. Laplace.
Just a few quick comments. I just thought to sort of wrap things up. I understand, I understand David's concerns and I would have been interested in seeing maybe some different ways to more elegantly tie the, the new construction with the existing house. Having said that, I really do think this accomplishes a lot of what we wanted to do with the overlay zone. First of all, and I think David made a good point, that we were thinking more of the corridor along Nassau Street and, and interior blocks as opposed to corner ones, which are more visible, more exposed. But if you look at this rendering in front of us right now, I really think it reads as two separate buildings. And you would also experience it differently if you were on the sidewalks on that block. Certainly you would see the old existing house along Wiggins. And then if you turned and walked down Tulane, you'd be experiencing sort of the, the, the two and three stories of, of the new construction in the upper levels setback. So I'm not as troubled by it. Also, I would point out, I think others have as well. This is a very eclectic section of town in terms of the height of buildings, the styles of buildings. You know, we have small late 19th and early 20th century buildings on Spring Street, right up against our very tall parking garage. We have tall apartment buildings of four stories. We have a building on the corner of Spring and Tulane. That's one story. So I, in other parts of town, I'd be more troubled by it. If I hear in this, in this particular neighborhood, I think it, it kind of fits. So I just wanted to share my perspective.
Thanks, Mr. Laplace. That, that really is helpful. I totally agree with you that it sort of reads as two buildings. And it, I might even have been more appealing in some ways if it were, if it were two buildings in, in terms of architecture. But, and, and I, I too really understand and appreciate and to some extent share Mr. Cohen's concerns. And I, I think it's gonna, it's gonna be sort of an oddball, whether, whether you, it's an oddball in a, in a way that you love or an oddball in a way that makes you say, hmm. But the, but it was the product of some unusual choices. And, and there is a lot to like and appreciate overall about this, this project. And I'll get down off my soapbox now. Are there other?
Sure. I just want to add one more thing I forgot to say. This is also very green. I mean, right, right now we're looking at a project that doesn't destroy and waste an existing building. And that's very important with Princeton. So, you know, even if it's not the highest architecture in town, the fact that we're not throwing away viable buildings, I think that's an accomplishment.
Absolutely right. And it has a green roof and it's got heat pump systems and it's got good stormwater management. And, and that's, that's exactly the kind of thing I meant. And the applicant has moved some units around so that the affordable units are not all facing the substation. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of give and take here. A lot to appreciate. Mr. DeGresia?
I just want to point out, because we've been staring at this, this photo, this also removes the, the big tree that we're preserving in front. So there's some landscaping that certainly softens this image, you know, part of the, I don't think the image does, does it, you know, any service in terms of, you know, talking about how it's blending? Because it removes that, you know, some of the landscaping. So you could, yeah, there you go. So you're seeing that tree there. The street trees will grow with time, kind of soften it. You know, talking about some of the other positives, the EV charging stations, the interior biking, as well as exterior, there's, there's a lot of elements. And it was honestly driven by the ordinance. This is a project that has literally no variances with the exception of a pre-existing condition, which is the house and the house setback because it doesn't follow, you know, the current zoning because it's, you know, an older house. But other than that, this fully complies with all of the regulations, with all of the requirements. And I think that the team has tried to satisfy just about every purpose behind the regulations as well. So I, I think a lot of thought has gone into that, even, you know, even though there are some subjective areas where people can disagree, I, I think there has been a huge effort. I, I know because I've seen them come back with, hey, how about this revision? How about this revision? Does this work? So, you know, and, and it's, it's really a creature of the ordinance more than anything else. And, and you know, you talk about separation, you can't separate it too. There's site constraints on this particular. You can't shift the buildings south. You can't shift it north. You even have setbacks where you have to require those setbacks. So it's, it, it was a tough, tough property. And I think they've done a great job of bringing a lot of very positive things in, including the four affordable housing. So, you know, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else we need to do before we discuss conditions? Mr. Muller, you want to take us through what you have?
Yes. And I'll start with the things I've jotted down in this session and the prior session and then shift to the reports. Okay, one condition, there'll be three, two-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit. One of the two-bedroom units will be a very low-income unit. And Christopher, jump in if you want to discuss any of these.
So far, so good, Jerry.
Okay. And then in terms of the, the sign, I guess we're not going to have a no pedestrian sign. There'll be a sign guiding pedestrians to the parking. Is, is that?
I don't know where the board.
It was a sign guiding pedestrians to the pedestrian entrance.
Oh, okay.
Do we, do we, my design team, do we have a location for that? Do we have an idea or just think about it and try to figure it out?
Is it really needed?
I, I wonder if it is, to tell you the truth.
I don't have a strong opinion about it. I'm interested in.
There's no walkthrough to allow people to cut through the property to get to the other side. The landscaping will prevent that. And so it really will only be the tenants and their, and their, and their guests.
Oh, that's a good point. So if it says pedestrians, people might think there's a short, yeah, that's a good point.
Right. I think, so we'll drop that.
I'm fine leaving, leaving the sign out. If any other board members disagree, please speak up.
Okay, then the property manager will wheel the cans with trash to the trash, before the trash truck arrives and then take them back. I would say as soon, promptly, something like that. We don't want them sitting there all day.
Yeah.
And then there'll be an area of pavers to put the cans on, not obstructing the sidewalk and the roadway. Then we have the whole question of the, the connection. If any board members want to, I mean, the only condition one could possibly impose is one to look at alternatives. But then we're kind of back. I would assume that would have to come back to the board. So there's, that's problematic. Is there anybody on the board who wants to pursue that? I know obviously David is, is very concerned. I can understand why with, with the connection. Anybody else want to pursue that? And maybe, maybe we could take the, the, the display down and so we could have the full.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else on the board want to pursue that?
But I, I'm sorry, Jerry. I apologize, but I thought we were still talking about garbage.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was finished with garbage.
Okay. And what, so.
Okay, for the garbage.
You don't need to go back over the garbage.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was finished, finished with that. And then the next question was, obviously we had, we've had an extended discussion about the connection. And David is unhappy, certainly for understandable reasons, that no alternatives really seem to be explored.
Well, Mr. Cohen, are you, are you against the connection or were your concerns?
I'm not against the connection. And even I am not suggesting we impose a condition on, on this aesthetic topic. I think the ship has sailed. I think that SBRAB and HPC gave their comments. And we had hoped the applicant would be responsive. But it's not, you know, as Mr. DeGresia said, it's conforming application. I don't think the MLUL gives us the authority to dictate aesthetics. And I'm willing to, you know, forego any kind of condition that.
Okay, that's fine.
Would try to cure that.
Okay. Then light, lighting, be warm spectrum. And there is, is there any lighting plan that we're looking for? Are we looking for them to come back with a lighting plan to be reviewed by our professionals?
So I, I, we've submitted the plan. I, I think it complies. We just, to the type of light would not be the bright white lights, but a warm spectrum light.
Okay. And then that's fine. And then screen the, the condensers and rain barrels, barrels.
Yep.
And then we'll reuse the bricks unless a donor.
Well, I, I think, Jerry, what we said was we would look into the reuse of the bricks. But because they are named bricks, it may not be possible. We may be able to take them, flip them, but that depends on the condition and how they are. So we'll evaluate, we'll, you know, in good faith, evaluate and try to use it. But because they're named bricks, it's not going to be, it may not be as easy as we, we hope.
Okay. Mr. Haynes, I thought was a little more affirmative on that. What if, what if we said, uh, go, you use the bricks to the extent practicable?
Sure. Some of them are stained on the bottom. So when we flip them over, we're not sure whether a power wash should be able to clean them.
Sure. Okay, good.
Mr. Haynes, I, I assume you've gone, you've talked with the previous owner about the bricks and whether there might be an expectation that donors could come and get their brick, for instance. So I don't know whether that's factored into any discussions.
You know, we haven't, but that's a good idea. We will do that.
Okay. I'm not going to put that as a condition.
That need not be a condition.
It's a suggestion.
And then no monoculture for the landscaping. There'll be a landscaping plan to be subject to review and approval of Dan Dopramilsky. Green roof conduit for solar array for use if solar, solar becomes economic. So it's going to be solar ready. Okay, that's from this session. In the last session, Exhibit A1, which is the slide presentation. And what we've done as a matter of course is say the, the development has to be consistent with all the site plan elements in exhibit, in, in this PowerPoint presentation in A1. Now, I know there was discussion about, I don't think we have to get into that. Now, there's a, there's a patio that's going to be upgraded. If the plan. Now, there's a, there's a patio, right, that's going to be at grade, if the plan showed that, the changes in the patio design.
Yeah, handicap ramp as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and the plans already show that now.
The, the exhibit.
Yes.
Okay, as per, as per, which exhibit is that?
It was A1.
Oh, as per A1, as per A1, okay, that's fine. Be a grade. Okay, I had a, from the first session, we'll engage a lighting consultant to design a lighting system, but it sounds like that's not that's, you don't need to do that. Is that fair to say?
Design a lighting system?
Yeah, that's what I, this was a note I had from the first session.
Oh, I, I think I, I know what you're, you're referring to. Our original plan had lights under some of the, um, what are they called?
Right, I have a separate condition on that, which says basically, they provide a sconce on balconies that do not have a balcony above.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's it on that.
Yeah, that's the only other design with lights that I'm aware of.
Okay. Then there'll be exterior bike parking next to the amenity space?
That's shown on the plans already as well.
Oh, it is, okay. Is that shown on Exhibit A1 or on?
It is, within Exhibit A1.
Okay, hold on.
The location is, I think it was like squared out in green. Is that correct, architect? The architects?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Just bear with me. Okay. Are we satisfied? I know one of the staff comments in the report from Jim and Derek was that you have to show how the, the retention, underground retention system will, will be viable. But I take it we're satisfied with that? Sounds like.
I, I, I still need to see calculations that the retention is going to take place, and that infiltration will, will work. But that, that can just be, you know, part of compliance.
Yeah, hold on, let me, let me jot that down.
Jerry, that's your, your typical condition, that the stormwater management has to be completed to the satisfaction of the stormwater management consultant, that's all.
Okay, that's all we have to say in it?
Yeah.
Hold on. In fact, I think you get to that in, in.
Yeah, that was my report.
Yeah, yeah. And the sewer connection fee. The utility plan should include required note that all the utility surfaces will be on the ground. Okay. Then, construction cost estimate approvals that may be required. I'm now looking into the staff comments. And what about architectural plans? Are we satisfied with what they submitted at this point?
Uh, Jim, you're muted.
Jim, you just asked, the applicants architectural, submit architectural plans that include title block, title and signature blocks, conforming to NJC, NJAC 13.
Yeah, I think that still needs to be a condition. We, we do not have architectural plans that conform to state law.
Okay.
In terms of title block.
And then you also have the applicant shall submit architectural plans on the ad hoc reuse of the existing building.
Yeah, they showed, they showed, they showed it in their exhibit, in their testimony, but we don't have plans in, uh, in a that, the plans were not submitted for that prior to.
The size of, of the, of the units, number of bedrooms, and details. And then the applicant should comply with the comments of the stormwater management consultant. And which has to show, and I'll just leave it at that. Bicycle parking analysis. Is there anything we need to do in that? I don't think so.
Mr. Cohen?
I'd still like to see the analysis, because.
David, you're.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to, um, pull Jerry back a couple of steps, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about the location of the outdoor bike parking. It's shown as blocking access to the outdoor amenity space.
Okay.
And I, I just want to make sure that the applicant wants to put that parking there. It seems like it could shift over and retain the connection of that little patio to the sidewalk, which is how the original design had it. And just put it in front of the building, but I'm not sure what the considerations were in showing it where it was shown in, in Exhibit A1, so I didn't want to let that go by without having a little bit of conversation about it.
So you're suggesting it would go on the building side rather than the sidewalk side of the patio area?
Well, right now, it's, it's in the patio. It's in the last bit of the patio. And I was suggesting, yes, that it could shift south to be in front of the building.
Would it be helpful to see that plan?
Well, maybe, maybe we could just make this subject to either the relocation, subject to either Jim's approval or, or Dan's approval.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but with the objective, that doesn't really address Mr. Cohen's point. I'm sorry, go ahead, David.
Well, so it doesn't.
Yeah, I'm just not sure whether the applicant wants to block off the patio or not. I think that Jim's review or, or Dan's review should be based on what, what the applicant is trying to accomplish there.
I think the idea was to create some privacy there for the amenity patio, but I'm open to other suggestions.
Well, I, I also just want to remind you that you have a retaining wall that follows along the sidewalk, and then we're going to turn and follow along the patio.
Yeah.
And, and that bike rack straddles that retaining wall.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not a location that works, and I think it would be helpful to bring up the picture, just so that people could see what we're talking about.
Yeah. Yes, oh, oh, three, page 21. Yep, that's it.
So David's recommending moving the bike spaces to the right, closer to the lobby entrance, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, because what he's pointing out also is that there's a grade change that's steeper, the closer you get to Wiggins.
And that's closer to the lobby entrance?
Yeah.
If you move the guest bike parking, the five spaces to the right, closer to the double doors, then yeah, you're putting it right next to the lobby entrance, which make, which makes sense.
Yeah, okay. And let's see. Okay, the applicant should provide analysis, back to Jim and Derek's memo. The applicant shall provide analysis of sanitary sewer demands, so that approximate gallons per day can be provided and verified, and the sewer connection fee can be calculated. Then the applicant shall submit sign plans for the office use, if proposed, along with a variance application, if necessary. What's, if you could react to that? Should I read that again?
Yeah, you, you were asking for, we did show our proposed sign on the detail. And to the extent we have a commercial use, Robert, did we have a space reserved for that, or did, oh, yeah, we did, okay.
Okay, so you already.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want to have the actual design of the, of the sign itself, subject to the review, either of Derek, which we've done in other cases, or? Derek, what's your feeling?
I'm happy to review it as a, a sign permit. It's going to comply with the size. I don't think we need to review it.
Okay, so this does not need to be a condition?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Need consolidation. Submitted to the land use engineer and board attorney for review and approval prior to filing, performance guarantees and inspection fees. Then Dan Dopramilsky's report, he has a whole series of things, but maybe it's just sufficient to say that there'd be a landscape plan which we designed in consultation with Dan. Okay.
Yes, we're going to address all his concerns, and then he's going to review and ultimately tell us what he wants.
Good, thank you.
And then in the McMahon, uh, report, item number two, the traffic impact analysis should include parking regulations and calculations based upon the Princeton Land Use Ordinance, properly assess the parking requirements and demand for the site. Do we want to do that? We're kind of approving the site with the number of parking spaces.
Which is what the ordinance requires.
Okay, so I'm not going to put that in?
I'm sorry, how are we being, is, how's it being suggested that we depart from the ordinance? I, I didn't follow that, sorry.
It, it wasn't just a, a recommendation in the McMahon, um, letter to Jim. His, his number two, the traffic impact analysis should include parking regulations and calculations based upon the Princeton Land Use Ordinance to properly assess the parking requirements and demand of the site. I mean, we're, I think we're beyond that.
I, I think we're beyond.
Yeah, they comply, they comply with the overlay ordinance for, for parking. I don't, I don't think our traffic consultant actually had the overlay ordinance to refer to. They were referring directly to the underlying zoning requirements.
Okay, then.
Provided a relief that was not, that, that was different than the underlying ordinance, so they comply.
Okay, that, that's fine. Then question of whether the parking spaces will be designated for particular tenants, what, what is the the position of, of the applicant on that?
I, I believe it will be.
Okay.
Is that a condition, though, or is that just up to them?
It's just an operational question, that.
I, I would think so too. It's really up to the.
That's fine. Okay, and then flush flush curbs and ADA ramps should be included for pedestrians crossing the parking lot entrance along North to Lane Street. This, this should include construction details and indication on the site plan. Look, that seems reasonable.
But no, that's, it's no longer a condition. They, they have a, they have a driveway apron and a, and at-grade sidewalk crossing that's not relevant anymore.
Okay, is that, is that from submitted plans, or is that from A1?
That was on submitted plans.
Okay. Okay, then there's a whole bunch of SBRAB recommendations. Waste collection, but we've talked about that. Architectural plans, we've talked about that. Then they talk about the transition between the two buildings, but we certainly talked about that. Okay, crossing the driveway.
We updated the plans to show that.
Okay, and the, the plans that have been updated and submitted, that includes reducing that wall from 10 feet to 6 feet?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have to say anything about that. Then balconies on all of the units.
Correct, the plans, the exhibit show that as well.
And that's Exhibit A1?
A1, correct.
Okay, so we won't, we're not saying that separately. Just bear with me. SBRAB says following, um, this area has recently received multiple rainstorms and quick succession, and SBRAB is concerned that this detention basin will quickly fill and then overflow. This is particularly problematic in colder weather, where the overflow could freeze and impede pedestrian, pedestrian access across the sidewalk. Do we want to say, do we want to address this in some way? Jim, do you want to jump in?
I, I thought we were going to agree to the stormwater management to the satisfaction of Jim Purcell, which will address all safety concerns.
Okay, hold on.
You know, I, I, I think the only thing in that one, Jerry, is that we did add a cleanout.
Oh, okay, and that's on the plans?
I believe so. Is that shown on the current plans?
I, I, I think that, I think that's all part of the stormwater management, done to the satisfaction of the engineer.
And you, did you want to respond to that comment in particular?
I, what? Who are you asking, Louise?
I, I'm asking you, Jim.
It's all part of whether or not they can demonstrate that they have infiltration. They have already provided for an overflow that I'm satisfied with. And the comment about freezing in the winter, if it's raining in the winter, I'm not worried about freezing. Because it's raining, it's not.
Well, yeah.
If it's raining enough in the winter to, to fill up their detention basin and have it overflow, it's warm enough that it's not going to freeze.
Well, don't get it freeze immediately after.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I get, I don't want to.
They have to maintain, they have to maintain.
Places along Witherspoon Street, for example, where water flows out of some pumps or gutters or something, and then turns into a great big patch of ice overnight. So I, I don't, I mean, I, I totally trust that you think it's not going to be a problem. I'm not, certainly not taking issue with that at all, but the fact that it rains in the winter doesn't mean it doesn't freeze overnight when it's 70 degrees during the day, and then it goes down to 20 that night because climate change.
Just don't anticipate that type, that intensity of rain that's going to fill up their detention system in the middle of the winter. And if it does overflow and there's, and the sidewalk is freezing over, they're responsible to maintain the sidewalk. I, I understand that if it's going into our street, that could be a problem, but without this detention system, this water would be running off into our street anyway. They've, they've complied with the requirements of our stormwater management ordinance is what I'm getting at.
And the green roof has actually reduced the flow.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, the, the whole system, again, they have to comply with our, to our satisfaction when they resubmit after they demonstrate that they can get the infiltration that they've, they're relying on to meet the requirements.
Good, sounds good.
Okay, just moving to the, um, report from Julie. The house restoration, replacing the shutters with properly sized shutters. I know, okay, everybody seems to be good with that.
I, I.
That was upon the next renovation of the house.
Yeah, I don't think there was a current plan to actually place them right now, but when the house gets fixed up.
Okay.
The house being renovated as part of this project?
We're not planning on touching the house on the outside right now.
Okay, so yeah.
Well, well, then.
The discussion was for the future, when, if you were going to renovate the house, it was sort of an offhand comment, just that, you know, if you do replace the shutters, try to do a good job.
So it doesn't, it shouldn't be a condition of this.
No, no. No.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's it on Julie's. Then PEC, we talked about the rooftop. Perfect pavers and porous pavement. We're doing that for that one area. Bike parking has been addressed. Distribution of the affordable units, and that's it.
I think the, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but our engineers said that, um, he didn't think pervious pavers were going to be or porous pavement were going to be effective, um, with the soil types that we have.
Talking about for the garbage cans.
Yes, sorry, okay, yep, thank you.
Okay, and, and that's it. So it's preliminary and final major site plan approval. Um, the one of variants from the, uh, house setback, um, which is what it is and the zero setback is required. Obviously, there's no way they can comply with that when they have to keep the house where it is. Um, then there is a, there are several submission waivers dealing with, um, downlight, well, here is a, this, this is in the, um, the rider to the application, explanation of checklist waivers is five of it, five of them. E4, which is the minimalist downlighting is depicted on the architectural plans. No other, no other exterior lighting is, so it's with respect to the, uh, the lighting on the architectural plans. No signage is proposed that when we can do, one of the checklist items with signage, architectural renderings, we've talked about that. And that's going to be subject to a condition. Then the affordable housing materials to be provided as compliance item following approval, that'd be conditioned as well. Um, and that's it. And then, uh, in terms of traffic, project isn't anticipated to generate the minimalist additional traffic. Which relates to one of the checklist waivers. So you have five checklist waivers. You have the variance, preliminary and final major site plan approval and the conditions. Louise, you're, you're muted?
Sorry about that. Uh, would someone like to move this application, preliminary and final major site plan approval with, uh, conditions as described by Mr. Muller, Ms. Sax, I see your finger.
I would like to move this application for preliminary and final site plan approval with conditions as stated by Mr. Muller.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Sax, seconded by Mr. Texarney. Carrie, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Um, and Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Christopher. Thank you very much, Aubrey and all of your, um.
Isn't, isn't Mr. Taylor eligible to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If, if I get an extension, you want me to include Mr. Taylor? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
I would be pleased to vote. What, what a pleasure, yes.
Thank you. I was not sure. Thank you. All in favor, well.
I think there's another motion that's coming.
You can say all still in favor?
So, Mr. Taylor, you got to vote on, uh, on a good application before the end of the year, that.
Absolutely. You made, you made my ear.
Great.
Councilman Cohen, do your duty.
I move that we adjourn.
Uh, moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. McGowan.
You get the vote this time, Mr. Taylor.
Yay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you're outvoted.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, everybody.
Very exciting, Mr. Haynes.